Kind of aggressive.
Literally startled me.
Good afternoon, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty five. We're here this evening for the Division of Education work session. We'll get started here. Mr. Burdine, please call the roll.
This is Racket.
Here.
Mr. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Mallon.
Here.
This is Ray.
Here.
This is Sam.
Here.
Okay, we're going to start with some presentations. Turn that over to Mr. White.
Morning, Mr. White.
Sure. First up, I want to start with school transportation safety. Ben? Yep. He's also a president of the district. So children here is going to share with us about bus safety. It's a big feature too. Your school foundation will be a chance to show our board. We had, I'm going to move so he can sit up here and see that way you've got everything else. Does Mr. Burdine want to go?
Thank you for the introduction.
Yeah, God, yes.
Hello, everybody. How are you?
Hello.
How are you?
Ben Tyrrell, I represent the START program with John Zepay here. START is an acronym that stands for School Transportation Active Shooter Response Training. What is START? START is a group of law enforcement professionals, military psychologists, crisis interventions specialists, all coming together and realizing that the schools are very safe, the buses need to be a lot better. Okay? Real quick, my backstory and my history. I've been on the Secret Service in the Secret Service for twenty-five years now. Started in the Washington Field Office doing investigations and protection, President's Detail for five and a half years with Bush, Obama. My last year there, I met a girl at Starbucks, got married, went to Cleveland, Ohio, had four kids in five years, haven't had a latte since. Three of my kids are a Revere. Next year, we'll be all four. Okay? Safety is very important to me, to us, especially with the kids. When I was introduced to John Zepay and Jim Levine, they came through this program saying, Ben, you'll be a great fit for this. I'm like, okay, why? And they had me brainwashed in about thirty minutes. Okay? Don't tell John this. I would do this for free. This is that important to me. When we look at the schools nowadays, we see RSOs, we see magnetic locks, we see a lot of training at the schools. Am I correct? All the teachers have a certain amount of hours for active shooter response at the schools. That's great. I know all about it. I've gone through the alert training, which is active shooter response training for the schools, and what each stands for. In the Secret Service, I am a tactical instructor. I agree with ninety percent of what they do for the schools. I applaud them. The buses are a problem. We have a tin can with two doors that don't lock, with drivers that aren't trained as much as they should be, with thirty to forty young kids on board. That, to me, is a soft target. Okay? It's a matter of time until someone, the wrong person, probably with a mental health condition, looks at the schools and says, that's Fort Knox. I can't get in there. Where's the nearest soft target? School buses. That's where John, myself, and Jim come into play. We have a phenomenal program that will train anywhere from thirty to forty to, I believe, on the Navy bus drivers, I believe, for an eight-hour course, and it teaches all the drivers about what their options are when things go wrong. Everything from a disgruntled parent to an active shooter. We teach everything from de-escalation to destabilization. Okay? A parent with a directive order against their child comes to the bus. What are the driver's options? Do they know? Have to think about it. Okay? As an instructor, when I'm training my guys, and they hate me, but I'm an instructor, okay, training needs to be three things. It needs to be realistic, repetitive, and difficult. Okay? It needs to be muscle memory. If it's not muscle memory, it's not great training. What do our bus drivers have that's muscle memory to react to a threat? Not a lot. Okay? That's where START comes in and gives the drivers options to start thinking about the problems before they happen. Okay? We had our intact division come to Revere about a month ago, and one of the key bases is proactive preventative measures. We want to be ahead of the problem. We want to see the problem. We don't want to deal with the edge of the map, right? We want to be preventative, not proactive. I'm sorry, we want to be proactive, not reacting to the problem. Right? So, John, you want to take over?
Yeah. Thank you, guys, for everything you do as school board members and having us here, taking the time. Yeah, so we, little kind of backstory on the program, START program. In twenty fifteen, Jim Levine was a school resource officer over at Shuren Falls School District. And he, as a school resource officer, he went and talked to the transportation director and asked, have the drivers ever been trained in any type of active shooter response or anything like that? They naturally answered no. And so Jim came to me and said, hey, let's try to put together a program. All of us were Alice instructors at the time. I'm sure you guys are all familiar with Alice. And so we took a lot of the concepts from Alice, but we realized that Alice program does not address bus drivers effectively. I mean, there may be a few key learning objectives from the Alice program that would apply to school bus drivers, but realistically, we needed a program specific for school bus drivers. That was in twenty fifteen. We really didn't do anything from then, and then COVID happened. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three is when we really started to get things going. Since then, we've trained all across the country. We've been all over the place, a lot of school districts in the area in Ohio here. Really a great experience. It's been, it's been really good so far. Bottom line is, we want to give the drivers the ability to have response options and recognize threats before they become a problem. So there's multiple different modules within the program. We look at juvenile behavioral intelligence, which is the threat assessment stuff. I know threat assessment is a big buzzword for you guys. But we want the drivers to get that training from the Secret Service guys who provide a great presentation on juvenile behavioral intelligence. What are the red flag warning signs that they should be looking for? I had the same school bus driver for ten years. So my school bus driver, for sure, sees me in the morning, sees me in the afternoon. She could recognize a change in behavior. She could recognize that probably better than a school teacher could. But if the school bus drivers aren't equipped with what to look for, what are those changes in behavior, kind of what good are they? So we want to make sure that they have those skills to look for. We also go over active shooter response. We do put the bus drivers through an actual active shooter type scenario on the bus, and they react to that situation. The biggest thing there is their options are extremely limited, and we all know our psychological automatic response options, fight, flight, and freeze, right? If the drivers freeze up, bad things are going to happen. How do we prevent them from freezing up? We have to train and put them through that, and then they go from there. So far, thousands and thousands of drivers, they love it. They absolutely really enjoy the program. We get a lot of hugs and handshakes at the end. It's the training I think they're all longing for. We talk about driver retention. I'm sure that's, I don't know if that's an issue here, but it seems to be an issue across the nation. How do we keep good bus drivers? If they can better protect the kids, and they're given the training to protect those kids, make them feel better, more empowered, that could be just enough to have them stick around. So driver retention is a big deal for us. We do become advocates for the drivers as well. It's a good opportunity for them to voice, you know, their concerns and what they have going on. So, any questions about the program so far?
So, Ben, I listened to you when you came to the foundation. You did a great job there.
Thank you.
You shared, I think, a real life story.
Yes.
About, do you mind sharing that, just to kind of give perspective?
Sure. What was the, what was the school district on the east side with the shooter? Chardon. Chardon. So there was a bus driver who, again, a little backstory. My dad was a cop on Lobo Island. Actually, he was a bus driver. Okay, so I have a lot of experience being a son of a bus driver, I should say. The bus drivers, like John was saying, the same bus driver ten years. The bus drivers, a lot of times, have more time with the kids than the teacher for a year. Because they might drive a kid, like my kids on the bus, no offense, thrice a day. Right? Every, every day for five, six years. That's a long time to know a kid. Who's going to pick up all those changes? So what was the kid's name in Chardon?
TJ Lang.
TJ Lang. Was it a troubled kid? There wasn't a lot of red flags the driver was picking up on. All she knew as a bus driver was TJ is always late for the bus. And it kind of makes me mad. His sister's always on time by the metal box. It's great. TJ just takes his sweet time, probably to tee me off a little bit. And this, this went on for years. Troubled youth. And then one day, he was on time. She's like, great, finally, he's on time. Great. He was quiet, got on the bus, tried to navigate it. He had a gun, went to school, and killed three people. Okay? Where was the red flags? Were there warning signs? What training was provided to the bus drivers to look for the signs? I've taught a few times now at START, and there are a lot of great, there's a lot of great dialogue between the drivers and us. And I think a big thing that comes up a lot is communication between the school, administration, and the drivers. If a driver sees a problem on the bus, and they raise the flag, and they email, phone call, transportation, who gets contacted? What's, what's the thought process? What's the corrective measure? And what is communicated back to the driver? They're kind of out of the loop. Is that a fair statement? Like, they're on, you know, bus island. Like, they deal with kids morning run, at noon run. That's about it. I think START really brings the administration and the drivers together for, for a common cause, right? To be problem solvers together.
Ben, we do have Verizon Push to Talk on every bus.
Yeah.
That are back to home base, which is a manned home base at all times, either with our supervisor or assistant. We do have somebody there at all times.
Yeah.
And then they have immediate access to Dan, me, others.
That's phenomenal.
We have, and since, of course, so we, we do have, I think, a fairly robust communication setup.
And that, that's step one, right? A lot, a lot of the students we talk to, the drivers, again, a lot of turnover, it's, well, I'm told they can use their cellphone.
Yeah, we've switched because there were people doing that before, and then we were having dead zones down in the valley.
Yeah.
Going down the bottom of Ira and West Bath. We were hit the dead zones down there, so that's why we went with the Verizon Push to Talk. It's not always a hundred percent, because if anybody's running the last few days, Verizon's had issues recently in greater Akron area. But it's really, really good, and it's way better than when we were operating off of the radios that were working off of the tower at high school and stuff. So it's, it's an improvement.
Yeah. And a lot of times, we invite the administration to sit through the training, to see and have those conversations, to start that ball rolling. Again, muscle memory training, repetitive, difficult, realistic, right? To be muscle memory. As a tactical instructor, a common communication term we use when we're bounding is moving and move. And for me, in my office, if I'm in a group or a water pool talking, and I'm leaving the group to go somewhere else, I yell, moving. And they're like, Ben, stop, really? I'm like, it needs to be muscle memory. So when I have my minivan taking my kids anywhere, I yell, moving, and the kids know if the seat belts are clicked, they yell, move. It's a little extreme, I know. But it's got to be muscle memory, because when the bad thing happens, you're going to be finding that figurative fog and that literal fog. And you're not going to rise to the occasion. You're going to fall back to the level of training you received. Okay? Everyone thinks like, oh, it's time to be a superhero. No. You're going to fall back to the level of training you received. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Did Ben also have any questions for these guys?
I don't have questions, but I'd make a comment. I had the fans very excited at the foundation meeting as well. I took an extra folder that day, and I sent it over to AJ, and then set up a call with him. AJ's our transportation supervisor. And when we talked, he started chuckling, and he said, Rick, I wanted to ask you to do this last year, because this is the Cadillac of training for bus drivers.
Wow.
But since he was the new guy, he didn't want to ask for too much on his way in the door, so he didn't ask for it right away, because the price tag, I think, give or take, is about ten thousand dollars for our group size. So in the course of dialogue that particular day with the foundation, they have agreed to pay half, I believe, is the budgeted number that they have. And then AJ is prepared to incorporate that into his budget request that I'll get a month or so here for the other five thousand. But it's on hold. Not really, you're not going to vote to approve it. I don't think it's a board, but if, if, if there aren't major concerns with us proceeding, I will tell him after our conversation. If you need more time, we'll wait for more time. The ideal setup, I believe, for the conversation with Ben was, it's, I believe, an eight-hour segment, ideally split between two four-hour blocks, and as fate would have it, at the start of next school year, we have back-to-back days in August, where, which would be ideal, because it's, it's already paid time for our drivers, they're scheduled to be here, they'll still have time for bus prep, and we'd be able to incorporate that into our existing work schedule based upon the calendar. It's already been approved. So if, if the five of you are okay with that, I know AJ has been in conversation with Mr. Levine. Or you, I'm not sure who he talked to now. Did he talk to Jim?
I think it was Jim.
I think it was. He was going to call Jim. So we do have a hold on those dates, just because we didn't want other districts taking those dates because we knew when we needed it. But we are not contractually committed to anything. It was just a request for a hold in the event that this is okay. Tonight or next month or whenever you're comfortable doing it, we will get that scheduled to do, or if you want to defer longer, you can defer longer.
I do have a question. So, sorry. So I like it. I mean, I think the teachers get this, like, see the gap, see all that. The repetitiveness is the part I'm concerned, because one and done is probably not the best approach. So is there a long-term, high follow-up training? And we're also getting new drivers all the time. So like, we have a lot of kind of moving parts, and it's repetitive for the teachers over the years, right?
For sure. So we, so we have a four-hour refresher course.
Okay.
That comes out at the following year after they complete START one point O, the eight-hour program. And for new drivers, right now, we're partnering with the ESCs, trying to work that out to where either a school can host new drivers in the area to go through the whole eight-hour one point O for new drivers, or they can go to the ESC in their district, and we can host, host the regional training there. So, yeah, so that's all, it's all just kind of happening now, because twenty twenty-two was our first, like, year where we kicked things off. So a lot of those school districts, right now, are going through the refresher course. And so that's, that's the plan. And then we are looking at a START two point O, which would be new content. Our big thing with this is that juvenile behavioral intelligence, the active shooter, and the crisis, the escalation we're dealing with angry parents. We want, we want the drivers to have that conflict resolution skills. But what we're getting, the feedback from the drivers, is special need riders and dealing with special needs. So we're working on curriculum that surround that. So we have some behavioral personnel that are, are working with us. So that's going to be more START two point O than kind of eight-hour deal. So there is a, a, a long-term project that we're looking at, so.
And I think I remember reading in your curriculum, they sent it, you guys sent us this stuff ahead of time, which was helpful, because I could read through it. But there was, I feel like, some stuff about, because it's the same route every day, it's a target. So are they also being trained on, like, you know, looking at what's coming?
Oh, yes.
As their approach, and so not just the end.
Observational skills.
Yes, yeah.
And you see, you see a problem, and like, you know, in the Secret Service, put the order keys, go, go, go. Just move, get out of the problem, and come back. Everybody can be ten minutes late and the problem solved. And pull over, go, this is my stop. I know who this person is.
Right, okay.
I've never seen this person. Let me deal with it. Yes. There.
Is, is there any type of continuous ad? Like, I know, you know, like, for companies, there's, like, if you use know before, you're looking at, like, cyber attacks or email phishing, you're always getting these continuous ad emails where you're going through, like, maybe a fifteen-minute presentation with a quiz. So you have, like, this continuous ad, so you're constantly, and if you do come up with that idea, we should talk afterward. So we, we are, we're working with iSpring Suites. I don't know if you're familiar with iSpring? And it's, it's a plug-in built on, on the PowerPoint, and you can make any PowerPoint into an e-learning platform. And so we're trying to actually, through our website, have an e-learning platform that could have, like, mini classes and updates and things like that. Because if something new comes out or something does happen, and we need, we want to push that out quickly, we would have that on our website. Yeah, you know, they have, like, the refreshers, where if you don't pass it, you gotta go through the questions again, and then you can answer. Sure. It's, it's the same kind of deal.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Well, first, I love that. I think this has, we talk about kids who ride the bus to and from school, but I think it affects all kids. Because even if you don't ride the bus, you take a field trip, or you go to different activities, and our drivers are driving the kids then. So to that point, would our substitute drivers be included in the training, or is it just the full, do we know that yet? Like, isn't there a substitute sub?
So we, we encourage anybody that potentially could drive a bus, substitute teacher, or substitute drivers, absolute mechanics even, sometimes get pulled in. Aides, we want the aides there. It's critical that the aides are involved and know, especially if there is a situation with a parent, what's the aide's role in that, in that situation? Or if there is a weapon on the bus, what's the aide's role in that situation? Also, we, we'd love it if the SROs could be there. We do spend some time about talking about arrival and dismissal and some critical points. Unfortunately, we've seen in past school shootings, like in Walde, Parkland, they're not sneaking the weapon into the school building and saying, surprise, here it is. It's, they're arming up in the parking lot. It's typically in the morning hours, and they're just marching their way up to the school. So with that said, who's also all there at arrival? Lot of people, the school buses, everybody, the SROs. So it's a good forum for, if the SROs have any information to pass along to the drivers. Some of the drivers may not even know who the SROs are. It's a good opportunity for them to be in the room, meet each other. So, and administration too. If admins can be there, it's always helpful to know that those drivers see the support from the administration. Sometimes we do, it gets a little bit, you know, hey, we report things, and nothing comes back to us, and, but it's good. Maybe there's an explanation why, or maybe there's something the admins can, can maybe look at and say, oh, maybe we can make that better for the drivers. Retention's a big deal. So it's a good forum as well for administration to be there.
Now, to your question, are the technicals to include the subs and the aides and different staff hours like that? We don't, we can't require the subs. We would pay them if they attend. We can't require them because it would miss our discounted workday for them like this for our regular drivers. So that would be the only variation. If somebody said, hey, I'm already committed, we start school, or we pay the other districts around. So if they're suddenly involved with the district, they might not be available to us. But my conversation with AJ has been to try to include those ones that we know. Particularly, like, we have two, we call them permanent subs, but not that permanent. They're still a sub. But we would definitely get them on because they are, they are obligated to us by contract from those days. So we'll get as many as we can.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, like you said, my guess would be most drivers would really want this training, as you've said. They want, it's something I'm sure that they've thought about, and they long for.
It's emotional. I think it's a word, but it's actually emotional. The hugs, the handshakes, yes, but the connection that they feel, like being part of the team. I think a lot of times, they're pushed off the bus island, and they don't, they don't get the response or the training or the partnership they, they want. And once they do, again, that helps retention, helps the overall safety aspect, team Revere, we're all kind of on the safety team, including the bus drivers.
A quick example of that was, we, we did the city of Akron, and it was President's Day weekend. It was a Friday and a Saturday was the training.
Time vote.
Make sure the story is your story.
ESR.
So it's, it's President's Day weekend, it's Friday and a Saturday, and we go to present. I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm just a small part of the presentation team, so I kind of kick things off. And then we have SWAT guys and guys like that, and I get in there, and, but every one of them are, are like this, and giving us this thing, guy. And by the end of the second day, it was tears in their eyes, hugs and handshakes, and they realized they needed this, this program. So, yeah, they really do appreciate it.
I imagine. Something that's concerned me for a long time, school buses. I'm seeing two sub.
And I think a lot of times, when we try to incorporate the drivers with our training program, we bring them to the school. But hey, come, come learn the, the alert training, the school safety training. It's like, we don't work here. Like, we don't, we don't lock doors and push down hallways.
A lot of the school districts will put their drivers through Alice to kind of check that box. I get it, you know, there's, there's not a lot out there. So it's what really prompted us to get this going.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
No worries. Any questions?
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, nice job. We're going to get out of here, if that's all right.
That's it.
Five minutes. There we go.
Mrs. Teager, I'm going to ask you to just sit right where you were, so you can breathe a little bit.
Oh, you're kidding. There's a breeze. There's a breeze. There's Sarah. We can all agree there's a breeze.
All right. So the topic of therapy dogs has come up, and Mrs. Teager, your previous administration roles, has had experience with therapy dogs, so just ask her to come and present to the board, and her experiences, I think we potentially learned from her.
That's okay.
I agree.
Oh, we're good now. Yep, okay. Yeah, so as I'm connecting here, thank you, Mr. White, for the opportunity to come and share. We have had teachers ask about therapy dogs. We've had parents ask about therapy dogs. And my two, like, big heart things that I love in life are dogs and kids. So when you combine them together, for me, there's nothing better than the two of those things together. So I was certainly excited for the opportunity to come and share about therapy dogs. Just see if this connects here. I think it's connecting. Maybe. There we go. There we go. So that's my son, AJ, a cute little picture, but, and our dog. So we, we love dogs in our family. Personally, I love dogs. Grew up on a farm, so I love animals. However, I know not everybody does too. So definitely aware of that. There we go. There we go. There's benefits to therapy dogs in schools, so just quickly, a couple of highlights of them. We know that some kids have difficulty with social emotional skills, so that friendship, that companion. There are studies that show that it can help with negative behavior in children, for children that are experiencing negative behaviors. It can be a positive motivator, and it also builds that, that capacity for empathy. Especially when you have the same dog that comes in time after time again, they start to, to build that relationship with it. Students will look forward to seeing dogs come in, so there's definitely some social emotional benefits. I'm sure for high school kids, there are too. I know my husband's school, they bring therapy dogs in during midterm exams. And students have expressed, like, they actually asked, no, are they coming back? Are they coming back towards, you know, the end of the school year, midsemester exams? And I think there was even one of the Olympic teams recently, there was, was it Summer Olympics? The gymnastics team. I think there was a therapy dog that visited with the Olympians right before their competition. It was the women's, USA Women's Olympic team this summer for gymnastics. So there, it just helps in many ways, reduce stress, some of that anxiety for people in general. There's also cognitive benefits, so there's a lot of studies that show can help with reading skills. So sometimes students feel, especially at the elementary age, feel a little uncomfortable reading in front of somebody else, especially if they're a struggling, a striving reader, but then they read to the dog because the dog is not going to give them any judgment coming back. And so they feel a little more comfortable reading to a dog, and that might help them continue reading, get them motivated to read. And if maybe reading isn't something they like, but then in reading to a dog, they're, they're just more motivated to read. So there's some other evidence of, you know, with executive functioning, problem solving, attention, concentration, relaxation, that there's research, research that shows it can be beneficial. We also look at school attendance. There's a number of schools that have had therapy dogs in that they look at student's attendance, and it's helped improve that positive, just motivation. I talked about that. The relationships, decreasing anxiety, a lot of those are benefits of having therapy dogs. There's a couple of research studies. If you want to dig into them, you can, but again, just looking at reading skills. There was a school in California, a university in California, that did actually a research project on it. And students' reading fluency increased from twelve percent to thirty percent in that sixty-eight week period of time when they had reading dogs, or reading, dogs in with reading groups. There's definitely barriers and what I call thoughts to consider. I shared one of them already, fear. Not all children like dog, dogs, and not all children want to be near dogs. They might not be comfortable being by them. I've had experience, I've shared with Mr. White. In my previous district, we had a student who had been attacked by a dog. And so just even knowing that there was going to be a dog in the school would be very upsetting to her. And so we, we wanted to be mindful of that, but we were able to work through some strategies with that to make sure that she never came in contact with, with the animal. So this is just something to be mindful of. Allergies, both direct contact and indirect contact. So this is just something to be mindful of, allergies, both direct contact and indirect contacts, we know we have students that have allergies. If I bring a dog into the setting, the dander is still gonna be in the carpet. So although that student might not be in here at that time when the dog is here, when the dog leaves and the student with the allergy comes in, they may have an allergic response to it. And so we obviously want to ensure safety of our students, including being mindful, and how can we, um, ensure safety for those that are allergic? Well, some of the things that we had done were, um, one dog in the building at a time, just oh, to control it a little bit, and, you know, having multiple dogs in the building. Um, so we just, one, one dog at a time in the building was one of our, just, um, aspects that we incorporated. The why, it had to be connected to a purpose, and so making it intentional, it's not just Miss Susie wants to show up with her dog one day and she's there visiting, it's organized, it's intentional. So how we did it in Hudson was, um, it was connected to our reading program. Um, I'll get into a few more details, but having some type of purpose or intention, it's, you know, at the high school level. Is it centered around test taking times, is it centered around our reading times at the elementary level? Um, is it connected on a, a special day or a special time of the month, like some, some connection? It's not just randomly showing up with dogs and then, it, it needs to be organized. Space, so I talked about that with the allergies, we put it in a non-shared space, so it was a space that there wasn't carpeting and a space where, you know, if we put it in the library, one student, a class comes in, and that's, that's fine, there's no allergies in that class. But then when that class leaves, again, we're running into the issue with, is there dander from the animal um, in the library space that could be problematic for another group of students that come in later on that same day or, you know, another day. Um, parent permission definitely is something we want to get, we don't know all aspects of students. Like I, I shared that example of a student who had been having negative experience with a dog. We knew about that because it had happened during the school year, the previous school year. But, um, there could be an incident that we don't know about with the family, or it could just be families wish or desire that they don't want the interaction with the dog. So definitely, um, being aware and having parent permission. We used, um, two established organizations, so, um, there's, I'm sure there's other organizations, both of these two, Therapy Dogs International and Alliance of Therapy Dogs, um, they've been around for thirty plus years. Their handlers are some aspects of why we chose those ones to use. And our therapy dog, or the program that we had, the, um, reading dogs that we had, is what we called it. Was, they've been around for a long time, they were well-established, they require retraining of, so it's not like you pass a test as a therapy dog one time and it's never again, they required retraining every few years for the handler with the dog. So that was something that we felt was really important. And then liability, they did provide insurance through those organizations, wherever their dogs were, they were going to hospitals or nursing homes, et cetera. Um, so they provided that too. Handler responsibilities, if you really dive into both of these two organizations, a handler should only be responsible for their dog and not something else. So even if I had a dog that was therapy trained through one of these organizations, I would not be able to bring my dog to school while I was doing my administrative responsibilities during the school day. As a handler of the dog, your attention and focus needs to be on the animal, and you can't multitask, right? So a teacher in these two organizations would not be able to bring their own personal dog, even if it was therapy dog certified, to school because their responsibility is with their students, and they, they, multitasking between those two is not, um, it's just not something that they feel is appropriate or good in the interest of either party. And then I talked about the liability piece already that they do provide, those two organizations do provide, um, insurance in case, you know, if anything were to happen, along with, you know, shot with vaccinations, all of that. So in Hudson, we did it where it was every Friday, we also had seven hundred students, so about the size of Richfield. So every Friday, we had four different dogs, it was spread, spread out, it was four different dogs throughout the day because, again, both of these organizations really believe strongly in that, both for the handler and the dog. It is, um, it's hard for the dog, right, like, they, they can't desire to be pet, they can't ask for treats, they don't beg. They are on their, like, absolute best behavior when they're in that environment, and so they don't want to overstimulate the animal. They don't want to overtax the handler either, so they usually limit it to about one hour, we limited it to one hour. And that was really what those two associations have recommended too. So it was one dog, one hour, we have four dogs, there was some time in between. Um, they would read with small groups of students, and then classes could have the opportunity to come and sign up to come and visit. So each class, over the course of a semester, had the opportunity to come and visit. But if a parent didn't give permission in that class, they would not go to that shared space to, um, see it. We had it in the, um, reading room because it was a non-carpeted area, we could just provide a carpet, the handler provided a carpet for the dog. And then they would roll it up at the end of the day, we would put it away, but they were, it was hard tile floor, so we could, the floor could be swept and cleaned and there was no issues with the, the, or whatnot.
Alright, any questions?
I do, so, did you, did you like how that worked out with the four, did you like it every week too?
So we, yeah, so we started with, um, when I, initially, that building, it was at Ellsworth Hill, that building was only a second grade building and preschool and preschoolers weren't in session on Friday. Probably just the age and the nature and also preschoolers having a little more unpredictable behavior, we did not have preschoolers engage with it. Um, so it was just our second graders and we did it one day a month, and that was definitely fine, we could get all of the classrooms in and all students had an opportunity then to participate, um, if they chose. Then we doubled up, so our first grade moved into the second grade building, and so that was when we then moved to four every Friday. Yes, it was, it was doable, it was fine, it was actually harder to find, to get the handlers to keep coming back with the same dogs. So sometimes we wouldn't have all four sessions, sometimes we would only have three out of four filled. Um, but we kept the same five dogs, like, the same, they would rotate, so as a dog always had a weekend off, or the handler sometimes wasn't available. But more times than not, we found like, sometimes we could get four dogs on a Friday. And then with the, like, things off on Friday, or, you know, that, so it probably came out to three times of twelve dogs over the course of the month, I would say, on average, ten to twelve. But it was the same five dogs that we would take through, and the kids knew the dog's names, like secretary would have. We all knew, in fact, one of the dogs retired last year, we made, like, we had a little retire in a party, made a little book for the dog.
These are some great, I mean, these are some of the same concerns that I had, so I'm glad you touched on those, I like the organizations that you mentioned here and the responsibilities that they hold themselves, so that I think is important. Have you had teachers who are allergic and then they couldn't participate? Would there be, I mean, I guess we would just maybe find someone who could take their class.
Yeah, so our reading teacher, um, at Ellsworth Hill, she organized all of it, she set up the time, she sent home on a Google form the permission slip, so she handled all of it, um, but nobody would be made to go. Like, if you weren't comfortable going as an adult, somebody, I mean, we're doing at Richfield, I would find somebody to like. Who wants to take the lead on this, I think it's a leadership opportunity for somebody in our building too, um, if they want to take that, or a couple of people. But yeah, I would never make an adult if you don't feel comfortable, because adults have fears too, right? And if they're not comfortable or they might have an allergy, I don't, that's not something that we should require ourselves. You know, we could just find someone else, because you hate for that class to miss out too, but we think, yeah.
I love that you spoke of the things that we had previously discussed about, I, you kind of hit on most of them, and I love having the purpose. We have two dogs, we're big dog, but my kids still reach our dogs, they love it, we used to take them to the library, they used to have therapy dogs. So I think that's great, if we eventually do have a policy, maybe that's where we start, right, is like Richfield or the younger kids and just kind of see how it goes. If we get there, but I love this, thank you for bringing this together, I so appreciate it.
You know, Natalie, you just made, mentioned the, um, something that made me think of this too, is it's also an opportunity to teach our kids about how to approach a dog. And so, you know, sometimes kids don't have dogs and they don't know, and so they may run up to a dog at a park and they're, you know, grabbing the dog's tail, like, right in their face, and so there's an opportunity there too, to teach our kids about how to approach an animal. Asking if it's okay, you know, letting them sniff the back of your hand, things like that, that are just those small teachable moments that we incorporate. Too, that we could incorporate. And there may be other organizations, these were just two that we used, I do think if it is something that we move forwards with, it is important that we, it's an organization, it is, I'm not. It's not extremely difficult to get a therapy dog certification, there are some organizations that are more thorough than others. Um, and so I think just in ensuring it is a successful thing, I think making sure we, they're established organization, just something that I would recognize, but.
Have you asked, can I ask if, I'm, I don't know if we've gotten this far, but have the teachers spoken how they feel about it? If we're just doing at Richfield or we haven't, you haven't?
I haven't, um, I've had a couple of teachers that have approached me to say, could we? Um, but, and we said, hold on for now, um, we have a service dog policy, but that is not, that's not what that entailed, so. Um, I think there are some that are, would love something like this, um, but they were also maybe asking for like, somebody they knew that had a service dog, and like I said, we did have a, I've had a parent that has reached out a few times. Um, that she has a therapy dog, that she was looking for opportunities to, um, bring her dog to, whether it be a school or a nursing home, things like that. So there has been a little bit of interest, but I wanted to, yeah, make sure we had something in place and making sure it was okay before we proceed with that. So I have not really jumped into that too much.
I think this came about because there was interest that was brought, I think, to central office too, is that right? And we don't have a therapy dog policy. And, uh, I think David reached out to you since you did this at Hudson, have you, uh, share your experience, so. Um, this is great.
And we didn't have a formal policy, we had a service dog policy similar to what we have here. Um, we did not have a therapy dog board policy, but it was, like, here were the guidelines, I guess, as building administrators of if you are permitting therapy dogs in, these were some of the things.
I think if we decide to have this, we'll have a policy.
Don't disagree, don't disagree, and I think giving, you know, some, I mean, you guys will figure it out, but giving some framework to what it needs to entail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Yes, thank you, alright. Thank you, I'm gonna scoot out too, because I have a friend in town from overseas, so.
The next two are gonna be, um, just presentations on curriculum, and just one of the elective fives, we need to know that we will have these on as a first read again next week at the regular session, just in case if we have community members that have questions or comments, uh, then they'll have the public opportunity to do that at that meeting, because here at work session they don't have that opportunity. So principals, listen closely, so if we have questions next week, you both are, no, because we'll be able to follow up with people. But, Mr. Conley, you and Mr. Kent, will you two start ours today?
Yeah, I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan, Ryan Lincoln, one of our elective teachers at the middle school. And he had a desire to start a financial literacy course at the middle school, which I think would be really, and something we've been talking about for a couple of years. So I'm just gonna turn it over to him, let him explain where it's coming from and what we're finding, hopefully can do.
We have, uh, discussed over the last couple of years, um, doing the financial literacy course in middle school is an elective, as an opportunity for, uh, for kids to have, you know, uh, to choose an elective that they, they want to take, they're interested in. Uh, that's what we like to do with all our electives, we have entrepreneurship elective, we have STEM elective, I teach coding, uh, as well. So just more opportunity for kids. There's a, my son and I, on the national championship game, he's a graduate of Revere last year. Uh, he's a freshman at OSU, so I couldn't, uh, I couldn't miss that opportunity, so. Alright, here we go, so I found curriculum, it's the, uh, personal finance course. This is the, uh, next gen personal finance, the high school uses the course, you know, just a little bit, I think, they just, they use a textbook by Pearson now, and some other supplements, but they actually have a middle school specific course as well. So it doesn't feed into what the high schools are already doing, but it's not going to take place of it in any way. It's just, uh, just like you said, another opportunity for an elective for our kids. It's going to cover the middle school, um, financial literacy, uh, the, um, standards, which I have on the next couple pages. There is, uh, I'll show that right here. So they actually pretty much are intertwined with our, with our standards, if you look at the actual curriculum, which I'll get to in a little bit. But it says, um, early, early intervention to build healthy financial habits is like one of the goals here. I've done this with my own kids, uh, my, my son is on his third year at Madison, he has Roth IRA, he's a freshman at OSU. He's looking at, uh, becoming a CPA and a CFA, and hopefully opening his own wealth management company someday, and I'm proud of him for that. And it just shows that when you start those conversations very early with kids, it's amazing, they just take off with it. Like, Fidelity has a youth account that you can set up, uh, they can start investing in stocks, they can start investing in mutual funds, they can, uh, you can do a custodial Roth IRA. And that's the kinds of conversations you have, or at least I have with my kids. And, uh, like I said, early, early start is, is huge for them, the compounding, the, the, the compounding that you get from fifteen and sixteen years old, tier sixty-five, I can't even imagine if they're on the calculators, I'm, that's, uh, it'd be pretty amazing. Uh, it empowers, uh, students to make, uh, informed decisions about their own finances. You know, like, e- even when my kids come to me, they, they want something, we discuss, like, well, you know, it's expensive, or that, this, these new skis or this ski trip that we want to go on, uh, these things cost money, how are we gonna plan for that? And so that they know that just money doesn't grow on trees, they need to plan, they need to prepare for that. So also, things are becoming more complex, so prepare students for a complex financial world, things are getting more complex now with us. Uh, you know, we have, you know, pensions are disappearing for a lot of workers, we have, uh, even SDRS are sold. We almost have to plan a little bit extra on top of those pensions to, uh, to be prepared to retire someday. So those are types of things that you discuss in a class like this. And the big one here is it encourages conversation between, uh, students and parents, there's actually pieces of the curriculum here where you would send home like a questionnaire or a conversation piece, so the students can ask their parents certain questions about finances and they just kind of start that discussion, um, and it's completely free, uh, that's the next bullet there, so this, this next gen curriculum is completely free. I don't think this is the only thing that I would use, I think you can really incorporate some interesting activities in here. Like, uh, the stock market games, like where you're investing and seeing how your investments do over time. Using the compounding interest calculator, which are all free resources, nothing that would cost anything for this course. And like I said, it would cover all these standards. This next, uh, set here is the actual curriculum in the next gen, um, course here. So it's money in our lives, discusses, you know, just the basics at birth, it's a short piece. Consumer skills, you know, like, you know, just basically various things like, you know, discounts and figuring out checking accounts and the basic things. Budgeting, which, um, a lot of people, uh, recognize as a big part of creating a financial plan, is actually having a budget and not trying to, not trying to go over it all the time, staying on budget, so that you can invest money for your future. Delay gratification piece, talking about credit, uh, saving, also investing. That's an area where I think the kids have had interest in the past, we had a couple of kids, uh, having to set up their own club, their own investing club a few years ago. So, um, that's something I think would, would be something that would be very interesting. And in that also, you, you start talking about, uh, things like Bitcoin and getting into cryptocurrency. You know, there, there are stories that you see over time, and someone does, they invest for their future, they work hard, they own multiple businesses and then they throw all of it in cryptocurrency and lose everything overnight, so we talk about those risks and things that you can, uh, you have to watch out for. And that's the next step is protecting yourself there.
I need it for a nine week course.
It's a nine week course.
Just give a nine week elective course.
Which grades?
Seventh and eighth.
They would only take it once, it would not be like.
Yeah, they can't take a seventh, they may, they gotta take either a seventh or a eighth, because when you get into eighth grade, your elective's kind of, if you're a band choir orchestra person, that's one elective, and then a lot of our eighth graders over a hundred and fifty years that can take a world language, so that's your second elective, because those are all your courses.
Right.
We want to reach as many kids as we can, so we'd offer it a seventh grade for those that know they're gonna take a world language in a band or a choir or an orchestra, the eighth grade student.
Do you have to eliminate any electives for this, or no?
No, because, uh, we consolidate probably a couple rates, he still teaches coding courses and a scratch course, we just probably eliminate the sections. His classrooms might become a little bit bigger, but I mean, his class sizes could double and they'd still be able to qualify, so. So it's one of those things, we've got the room in our schedule, we have a passion to do it, I think it's a great thing. We did meet with the high school, so, uh, uh, Mr. Frye and Coach Nickel and, uh, Coach Ray Haas, uh, Rahas, who teach, you know, who teaches personal finance at the high school, told them what our plan was, they loved the idea of getting some foundational skills at the middle school. Um, obviously, they didn't want it to replace them, so it's not with the credit, I think it's just the intro elective and even in our description, what we would share with parents, it says this does not replace the high. Intro elective and even in our description, what we would share with parents, it says this does not replace the high school required course at the, at the high school level, I think it's a half credit course, they have to pay for a quarter credit course. But it, you know, making sure this is foundation, it's just getting a fee wagon, they're interested in what's coming in high school.
I think it's great, I think it's important to start teaching them young, to start saving money and what that can look like, you took up compounding interest, if you start saving young, what that can look like when you're seventy is a lot different than starting at thirty, and yeah. Um it's just scrolling through, I saw some things are really good, even talking about how to protect yourself from fishing scams, I think is huge for kids to start understanding that, because that comes to all of us. I did have a question, uh in the parent piece, I know you said that there's some things that you send home at different times to start conversations. Are there resources in there for parents who maybe aren't well versed in this themselves, that they're not, that they would then be able to understand it to be able to work through their, this with their kid at home if they're not.
Sure, the website is totally available, so they could go in and out of this mess and all that.
Okay, perfect.
Uh for sure, so um it does, it like, it actually provides a lot of these questions, of course, you can modify them and.
Yeah.
I change them, it's all digital, so that makes it, you know, if I see something there, I don't think that's gonna be appropriate for this grade level, I can change that.
Okay, that's great.
But uh, yeah, for sure, I think the, getting kids talking with their parents, I mean, how many times have have we sat down at dinner and like, hey, how was school today? Good.
Right.
And what'd you learn today? Um, nothing. Or whatever, they'll, they'll shorten answers to it again.
Yeah.
What they do, what they do at school.
My son Davis took the personal finance from Nickel, and it was probably the most we've talked about in his class.
Yeah.
Like every day, and then my other boys, like we make them, they have to save up enough money to get a car, so they have to, you know, save a couple grand, so they have like a. Window washing business and a lawn business and talking to them about spending money and just like getting a loan, and I was, I mean, I I probably. I was shocked at how they do absolutely nothing, like, you know, but even like picking colleges and knowing student loans, I think this would be great because. I know Davis was, he would ask me some questions where I don't think he was overwhelmed, but it's a lot, when you're talking about, you know, 401K and Roth, where if they would have had this before in middle school. It would have given them like a, you know, cuz that's the age where they really start to, I wanna go lawns or do some things, so if they would have had this, it would have been um a lot better. Even understanding like I see car insurance on there and things like that, but they just have no idea, you know, they think it falls from trees, so this is a good, yeah, this is, I I really like this for that.
Saving for college as well, like over time, like the 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 five twenty-nine plan, just that alone right there is absolutely amazing that so much of our population doesn't even know that is.
A lot of money.
You know, and how awesome that could be for for kids in the future.
I'd love to see something around budgeting with the student loans, like my family is very, I'm going through the college process with my oldest daughter now, and that's a huge conversation. We've talked a lot about five twenty-nine, so we had these conversations, her dad started saving his 401K like a decade after I did, so you can see that big difference, right? So um all of that, but we have, she has friends whose parents are just like, wherever you wanna go, we'll just take out loans, and then you'll just pay the tax when you become an adult, and. The impact in your budget when you get on the other side of that challenge degree is huge, if you have a family that really wants to look at not taking those loans, it's just a long, it's a long, like you take those loans. And start to a different spot in your adulthood.
Those are really important discussions, and the earlier we start, I mean, I like it, it doesn't replace the high school, because here you can hear these things more than once, so.
Right, this is nine, we need to, in no way, yeah, are we gonna be able to replace all the things that.
Sure.
Of course.
Right.
And they get into actually filing taxes.
Yeah.
And that's, that's great, so filling up the ten forties.
Starting that conversation, yep.
I think it's a good, it's a good primer for what they're getting at high school, I did go on this afternoon, I realized it was available, I was like, let me just go through here, and I read most of it, I think it's even just like budgeting. How to read a receipt, which sounds so basic, but when do kids ever see an actual.
Identify needs and wants, every parent will appreciate that.
That's really identify that. But I think it's great, did you say you think you would add additional resources, or you you would.
You can, there there are, there are sites where where kids can compete against each other in investing online, uh and.
They do that at the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's great. Game money, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. They try to make something, yeah, but yeah, we don't, we don't start English in like three, we don't start it, you know, we don't start it earlier.
And we have, we have these electives, and the kids all have to take them in sixth and seventh grade, mostly, and then some in the eighth grade. I just was looking for something meaningful to, you know, so they can really experience something that they can use in their lives for sure.
That's great, I like it, thank you for bearing this forward, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that a block, oh, oh yeah, whatever you got.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Really good.
Mr. Chira, you know, our next presenter on the high school honors music ensemble.
I was gonna say, it's a little cold in here tonight, but.
Uh good evening, everyone, thank you, uh thank you for not being able to speak, there's many familiar faces, but uh for the new ones. My name is Tom Chira, I'm a, I I teach primarily at the high school with the instrumental music, but I also start the little ones in fifth grade, and then I have a couple opportunities throughout my day to stop at the middle school. And support Ms. Fluker down there, so I I do get to see a full gamut of our of our musicians, um but the point of today's conversation or kind of talk is is to recognize. Uh an opportunity to provide a track for our high school students to be recognized and and create a differentiated approach to. Promote our our talented and high achieving and and motivated students at that level. Little bit of a backstory, uh so I'm I'm in year two right now at Revere, and and part of the interview process was in front of a panel of. Of parents and administrators and community members, and one of the things that that seemed to be a re- reoccurring topic there was at the high school. Is there an opportunity for the students to to be kind of steered and pushed uh to those upper levels and be credited for it? A couple reasons I think that's 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 vital and and really an important opportunity for us to consider is um. And when I, when I look around the band room, but truly all all of the arts, I mean, they are, there are school leaders, there are school uh academic high achievers, there are art volunteers, there. There are, you know, they 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 truly are exceptional students. And uh one of the things that came back to me in this question is, hey, um Mr. Chira, right now, my junior and my senior year, my arts class, my music class is the one that's bringing down my GPA. I'm like, well, I I don't wanna lose you for that, I mean, like, I mean, that that community aspect is super important to us. So through conversations over the last year and a half with with our high school administrators, and most recently with our counselors, you know, the the proposed track is is one that's kind of collected. Best practices of our neighbors and some of my colleagues across the state that uh that that we think would uh provide a a great opportunity for for our students. Not only to recognize some of the things that they're naturally doing, and they are the students that will say, hey, um to be to be uh. The most accomplished musician, the most ideal role model, the 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 team leader, you should do these things, and one of those things is is so an ensemble events. So that's the anchor, kind of the the center point of of kind of the proposed um program. But as I say, that ma- many of them naturally do, because they instinctively want to be high achievers and people pleasers and. And 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 take advantage of opportunities that that will say to them, you know, this will, this will make you a better musician, this will make you a a better presenter. You know, as as you go on, whether it be music or not, music, standing in front of a an audience can can make you a little nervous and get the heart heartbeat going, you gotta catch your breath and and calm down and. And think through everything that you're doing, um so they naturally want to do those things. I see it as an opportunity not only to congratulate and recognize those students, but also entice the ones that are the next tier, they're on the fence. You know, they 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 see their their classmates, you know, filling those roles and 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 maybe they're they're a little bit reluctant, it also has a pathway for them. To dip their toes in it and and be inspired in that way. So the the general summary and and I I think uh I think what's in in your notes is 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 kind of a good platform to be able to to start conversation and kind of create a path. That uh that I do feel supported administratively and through the counselors or conversations, it's not a major change. In our course structure or um, you know, or how things are described in the handbook, but it would create an opportunity for students to have a four point five honors. Credit inside their ensemble experience. Uh I will say, the alternative is, and it works, you'll you'll see it in some of your core curriculums, create another class, create another class, and here's your honor band class, for example. What would be hazardous to us in that scen- scenario is is we lose some of our communal ensemble experience, and we we want that. Uh that opportunity for them to interact musically with with the numbers, with uh with the relationships socially and musically, that we don't, we don't wanna take them away from those those experiences. So it is a, it is a kind of a menu line item track that students at the beginning of the year or end of the previous year would have to volunteer in, not mandated, not required, but volunteered in. Say, this is what I'm interested in, to earn the weighted opportunity, and as I mentioned, it's centered around a solo and ensemble experience, which is already structured. Uh it is in line with what the large ensemble already does through Ohio Music Achievers Association, which is a sanctioned event that we attend multiple times a year. That has outside experts evaluate, provide feedback and encouragement and ways to improve and 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 recognize their successes. So that structure is already there for us to invite students in small ensembles, so typically those are three to ten. Uh and solo opportunities, which often as an instrumentalist, it's with a piano player or or truly by themselves. Their their experience would be selecting that piece of music, and that can be differentiated from from a freshman to a senior. The level of that piece of music can be differentiated to their quality, we'll we'll stretch that. The experience of preparing it, the experience of then publicly performing it, and then the feedback and the reflection uh is the center of the experience. Through the year, they would have to accumulate so many points, um if if they just do that, that's about fifty percent of the required point structure. Outside of that, it is a menu of many things that they naturally do, but all things that I think we can agree are are super important, and that is. Um sharing their expertise with classmates and mentoring to public performances uh in the community, in the school district, to uh. We're recognizing right now, we have a about dozen students that over the last month and a half have volunteered to kind of push themselves. In our university honors ensembles that they have to apply for, um but at the University of Akron and Kent State just did one, we had a a student who just returned from Ohio State. All of those things we we want our students to do and continue doing, this would be an opportunity to uh allow them to be seen through their credits. That they would, that that would be on the menu as something they could do to earn points. Also on the menus, research side of things, reflection side of things, interviewing, again, just trying to get them out of our classroom and expanding, sharing and exploring. Their uh their artistic abilities.
So, yeah, in addition to this, we have a multi-year plan for music and one of the things that we talked about with our counseling team was being able to offer AP level. Music classes that aren't necessarily skill-based, but more on the academic side of things, so like an AP um music history class. That's more of like a two or three year down the road, so we'll come back to you and ask for approval for those classes, but the idea is is to really create those opportunities for kids across all. Playing level abilities, so it's not just like Tom said, it's not just for wind and ensemble, it's for all all playing lovers, so it's pretty exciting, and I kind of it is it's a passion behind it.
I just wanna make sure I understand it correctly, so all the students that want to do ensemble, whether it's honors or not, are in one group for the year?
Uh there's multiple groups, so so band wise, right now, we have a population of students, which in a positive way, but they're divided based on skill sets.
Okay.
So the ensemble experience itself will provide them an option to grow as an ensemble appropriately, an advanced ensemble, choir does the same thing, orchestra is on track to be there in in a couple years. It's currently where we have.
So then those students, some of those students in each of those groups could elect to.
Could elect to do it.
And if they fall short, they're graded, they can't drop it off, they kind of made it like a volunteer, so like if they commit at the beginning of this year, and they're committed for that, we'll give them the grade upon.
Correct, okay, so and and there's there's a a couple things that that we can offer through that, um but I will say from from all of the experience I've had. In dialogue with my colleagues in other districts across the state, um once the plan is there and you, and and part of it is sitting down with that student saying. Here's your plan, is this realistic, can you accomplish these things, what's plan B, what's plan C? So that there isn't a scenario at the end of semester that you're a point short, you're two point short. Everyone's saying to me, Tom, that hasn't happened, but you need to be prepared, so yes, there is a uh a percentage system, that if they do fall a point short, then their. Uh ninety-seven percent becomes a ninety-one percent, but it's on that weighted scale, so it's, so they still have that opportunity. But I I am confident that if everyone's doing their jobs, that's a a very rare scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
What about, so, and then I think it too, it gives kids like maybe you have some kids who this is the one, so they have to take an honors course. Because they're, you know, they have a real passion for music, so I think that's a great opportunity for them too to help, you know, kind of boost their GPA, because maybe music is something that they wanna go into college and study, and that's really where their heart is, so I think. That's really positive too, yeah, absolutely.
And then the other piece, just about extending the credits, um due to the length of bands starting at the end of July.
That's right.
And color, yeah, so color guard uh is included in that, yeah, so that.
So what's the, so maybe extending that.
Yeah, I'll cover that real quick, and again, I don't, I don't take credit for any of these ideas, this is all just me looking around saying, hey, what what could be next for us to continue recognizing and seeing our students? Um this uh this is coming from the point that that truly our our band classroom, um it starts before football season, but they gotta be ready. And it starts and it and it ends after the year, cuz we're finishing Memorial Day and with part of graduation, we're doing all like, which we love. But sometimes we get the question, do I have to? And and my answer is like, that's our, that's our service obligation, that's our opportunity to to give back to our school and give back to to our community, so like, yes, it's part of what we do. The extended credit truly is, you know, it's a gold star saying we see you, um it's point two five. You know, quarter of a credit, knowing that that they're active, they're, I I think I did the math before we spoke, that's at a minimum, it's seventy-two hours of instruction time. Before day one of school, that is excluding their performances, you know, the the parent show, the halftime show, the the Ridgefield Parade, the Franch Festo, like. And and those are all great things and services that we wanna provide, that this would be an opportunity to say, we recognize you, we thank you, and and you're you're growing from it, as 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 are we.
I think it's great, having a daughter who did four years of marching in here and loved it, um you know, her GPA would have done better if she didn't do band and chose something else. She had a great GPA, and she worked really hard for it, but I know she would have very much appreciated a little bump if she could, because that was a a loss that she knew she was taking, and she was okay to do it, but I think it's great to offer that to some of our. Really high achieving kids who are making that sacrifice, I think it's a nice.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate it.
If you know that, to have some of our high achieving students waiting on me as Jasmine. Start at eight minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, last but not least, Mr. Ferris, this is all we're gonna talk about SAT and BCT testing at the high school. Yeah, I was just gonna say, so for both of these amazing people I get to work alongside every day, their passion and their energy and their effort and their thought and their consideration. Everything that they poured into these presentations certainly doesn't go unnoticed by me, and I'm really, really grateful, this next one, uh this conversation has been going on for almost two and a half years. And Elizabeth Long is the is the point person on this, so she'll do most of the presenting, but certainly there's a process for us to get to this point. Um that process started within our management team, so that's our counselors, administrators, and it moved to our BLT team. So Elizabeth presented to the building leadership team, of which she's a part, uh just this basic concept and information, um and then obviously we took it to make anywhere here now. So we do have a level of approval from our staff, because we did ask our building, our department leaders to go back to their departments and ask if there was any objections uh for us to consider moving to SAT. and ask if there was any objections for us to consider moving to SAT, especially for our math and English departments who, you know, have designed a lot of instructional pieces around gearing our students towards a level of success on the ACT. So it's gonna be a transition for them, but we don't think it's gonna be a challenge.
Thank you so much for having me here today. Yeah, just to give a quick background, I have been kind of not just watching, but entrenched in ACT and SAT review and working with students for over twenty years now. I did some after-school programs at Bladsworth for ACT SAT prep. I brought that to review when I was an English teacher, did some after-school things for ACT prep at that point too. And I, I will say that where we are right now, seeing the changes that have happened for both tests, it is, I feel very surprised that I am at a spot where I feel more strongly now about the SAT and the benefits that that has for our students because I used to be so much all about, you know, how the ACT is great for our students. So it's interesting to see how those different tests have changed and the different approaches that each of them have taken through those changes over the past few years and how that aligns just with, just different goals for our students. So I think it's always important to be analyzing and asking ourselves, you know, just because we've done this in the past, is this still the best thing that we should be doing or are there other things that we should be considering? And so that's just kind of a constant process that we're looking at. Doug, I'll kind of go to you a little bit for the background of, you know, the school day testing.
Right. So obviously we have state funded testing and it's worked out wonderfully. Eight years ago when I came here, you know, we were ACT, we actually had a partnership with some education initiative and we would get resources from them for the practice ACT. So what this kind of looked like through the year, in the fall, we had Futures Day and our ninth and 10th graders would take the practice ACT. We would take them back to Summit Education Initiative. They would grade them, score them, break them down for us, give them back to us, we would share them with the students. And then in the spring of their junior year, they would take the ACT. Few years back, that option no longer was available to us. So we elected to go with the PSAT. So now currently our, our kind of four-year journey through high school for this big national test is freshman year, you're getting PSAT, the practice SAT, sophomore year, you're getting the PSAT again. And then fall of junior year, you're getting the National Merit Qualifying, Scholarship Qualifying Test. And then you jump to junior spring and take the ACT. So it just, the streamlining, we're kind of looking at that as a ten thousand foot view of, does this progress make sense? And that's where I think we go back to.
Yeah, absolutely. And so I think, you know, that's one of the reasons we're looking at, you know, why, why are we considering making a change? So that is, that is definitely one of the things, looking at what our students are doing for preparation, I think is, is an important piece and we want to make sure that that all aligns. Looking at the ACT and SAT, students can always make their own choice to register for an ACT or SAT. The school day ACT or SAT option is something that has not been around forever, you know. This is something that is, you know, relatively new. So this is where we're making that decision as to which one are we using at, you know, for our school day, ACT or SAT. So students still can make choices, as many students have in the past, to, to do one or the other on their own as well. So that's something to look at. The other piece with why we're considering a change is thinking about the timing. The tests are going, well, SAT recently went through a digital change and now that change is complete. And it is kind of stabilized and moving forward. ACT is entering into a period where for a few years now, there will be changes that occur with students taking different types of tests, paper, digital, all of that transition will be happening over the next few years. There is a lot of confusion with college admissions as to how they will be utilizing those ACT results. And I was in, in a session where ACT was describing that, I was sitting in the session with the admissions director of Ohio State and she was asking so many questions and I got a chance to kind of get some insight into how they're kind of grappling with the ACT changes. So that kind of pushed me even a little bit more in the SAT direction, saying, okay, well, the SAT changes are stabilized. Colleges know how they're using these scores. There's not as much confusion over all the, the different use of those scores. So now might be a good idea with all the alignment that we have and then also with the upcoming changes for the ACT. You know, we didn't get caught in the SAT's changes and now we might not get caught in, in the ACT's changes. So it kind of helps our students long-term. Just as I've talked with people about these two different tests, I feel like there's a bunch of different, you know, myths or facts about the tests, especially since there have been so many changes with the tests over the years. So one of the myths that I, you know, a lot of questions I get is, you know, don't colleges prefer one test over the other? And the fact is that every single college in the country will accept either test equally. There's concordance charts, so if the school accepts or requires tests, they're going to equally accept them. There are some schools that don't accept testing at all. There are some schools, many schools that are test optional, there are some schools that require tests. And their testing policies change from year to year. So every year we are updating that information. There are no longer regions of the country that prefer one test over the other. They're, the tests have really aligned in terms of the content and they're, they're just different in terms of the format. So they, they are able to use those concordance charts to use both of those tests equally. So yeah, the myth is that they test students over different content. So we used to have, like the SAT had, you know, all the vocab and analogies and all of that. Those questions are no longer part of the SAT. It is much more based on evidence-based reading and writing and it's based on comprehension. There's still vocabulary, but it's words and context. So the, the two tests are now very similar in content, to the point where they get their PSAT results. And I will tell students, okay, take your PSAT results, go on Khan Academy, study the content there. That content's still gonna prepare you for the ACT. Yes, the format is different, so we need to kind of get you caught up on some of the format practice, but the content really is so similar. Timing is a little bit different for the tests, the way that they organize the different sections is different. And then the online question delivery and how each of the tests has adapted to the digital format is a little bit different. And so that's kind of where we have to kind of consider those things.
No, there's not a science portion though in SAT, is there? That is a great question. Yeah, yeah. Um, so yeah, next one, it's like we, maybe we had talked about this before.
So the ACT, ACT sections, currently the ACT has English, math, reading, science, and an optional writing section. One of the changes that's coming up in the next year, year and a half or so, is that they will make the science optional. And that's part of what admissions offices are not quite sure, you know, are some admissions offices going to require the science? Are some not going to require it? So there's a lot of, you know, decisions have not been made from college admissions offices as to whether or not they're going to require the optional science section. The SAT actually has the reading and writing with two modules and then the math with two modules. And then how do these tests cover the same content? If there's a science on the ACT but not on the SAT? So the ACT separates out those science questions, but the SAT embeds the science type questions into the reading and writing section if they're looking at kind of synthesizing information from graphs and charts, kind of a reading comprehension piece to the science. And then the science questions also can show up on the math section of the SAT if they're looking for calculations and, you know, analyzing graphs and charts and using that information. So that's where the content really is the same, but it's just how it's embedded and how it's organized is just a little bit different between the two tests. Yeah, it's, I could talk about this for a minute. If anybody wants to talk more. We already talked a little bit about like the long vocab list and analogy questions. Those, yeah, those were replaced by more like evidence-based reading and writing, reading comprehension type passages. How did the two test digital formats compare? So the ACT has basically taken the paper test that they have and they have put it on a digital platform where responses can be recorded digitally. The SAT has redeveloped test questions completely to meet that digital format. So for instance, the ACT will have a whole reading passage. I think I have an example of that here. Yep. So the ACT online will have a whole reading passage, where you have the passage and then you have ten questions based off of that passage. The SAT. The SAT, so this is again the ACT.
This is one of those things that we're thinking about our kids because we did the ACT online last year and we're gonna do it again this year. And you would see students scrolling through passages and scrolling back to the questions, scrolling through passages and, and it was, we feel it was quite harmful. The SAT is much.
Yeah, so the SAT, what they do is they just take one passage, one question. One passage, one question as you're looking through that. So sometimes they'll have two paragraphs that go with that one question, but you're not having to scroll and go back and read. And so the actual platform of the SAT test seems to be a lot more user-friendly. And so that's part of the consideration. This is, you know, looking also at the timing. The ACT is currently three hours and five minutes with two hundred and fifteen multiple choice questions. They have an additional forty minutes for the writing test. The SAT redesign, the new digital SAT is two hours and twenty-four minutes with ninety-eight questions. They're mostly multiple choice and then there's some student-generated responses for math. So there's more time per question. And our students are used to taking this test from the PSAT that they take each year in the fall. So it, all these pieces just kind of align where we just feel like this is a better option for our students to be able to shine. So that's something that we're looking at. When we're looking at preparation considerations, you know, obviously there's the piece with Futures Day, how we have that. There, the free preparation resources are more robust for the SAT. There's seven full-length SAT and four full-length PSAT score practice tests. Those are all free on the Blue Book platform and that's the platform they use to take the test. Khan Academy partnered with SAT for free targeted skill building. So every single question has multiple lessons, multiple practice problems through Khan Academy that our students use for other practice as well. Then just recently, Solcom, who started Khan Academy, launched Schoolhouse World. And this is where they take students who have scored well on the SAT and ask them to be teachers for free, like live group sessions on Zoom. So they have students who've done well paired with other students who are wanting to improve their score and that's all free for live prep where it's a cohort of, you know, six to 10 students on this Zoom for six weeks straight and they work with other students.
I will, I will say the teachers are most excited. Just a brief look at the resources available to help our students prepare for this, they were like at the Khan Academy resources.
Oh yeah, that's great.
They were quite diverse.
Yeah, it's a good one.
I mean, that's a drastic difference.
Yeah, and that is, it's anytime we would look for ACT prep for our students, you know, there are resources, but a lot of them are paid resources that students would have to purchase. There's one full-length practice test, one online test, and then they can download one full-length paper test. The ACT still is going to, a lot, like they're still going to have over the next few years, kind of their paper test as they kind of phase some things out. So, you know, if some students do prefer the paper, that is a bit of an advantage for the ACT, I will say. But once students have, you know, practiced as much as they have with the PSAT digitally that we do, you know, I think that that, you know, they've gotten used to that. When we're looking at the one at the school though, we've done digital for ACT, so that would be going forward. So that, that benefit of, you know, the, the potential of the paper test has kind of gone there because we have chosen that, you know, that online platform.
We, uh, we really, I can't remember if you have that, Elizabeth, I'm gonna jump there. We really want to introduce like, so tomorrow we're talking about mostly all our eighth grade, our newest freshmen coming. And we really want to start, just become familiar with school links, because that's your graduation requirement platform. And then your, your SAT account, your college board account. And if we can get students and families working through those two platforms, I think we're gonna be servicing our families really, really well.
College Board also has the AP testing, so that's another thing, like as we are submitting for, you know, requests for accommodations, that would apply to the PSAT, the AP test, the SAT test. So it's kind of all aligning with that, that one platform. There's also a lot of teacher resources. So teachers could use the PSAT results and incorporate that. There's score band analysis, there's question banks that are tied to Ohio State standards that College Board provides. So there's a lot of resources that teachers can use that are aligned with those PSAT tests. PSAT, the, one of the reasons we do the PSAT is that's tied to the National Merit Program, the National Recognition Program. So there's a lot of these benefits that go along with, with that. Here's just a list of some other schools. When we asked our, somebody from College Board, you know, what are some other schools in Ohio that are doing the SAT during the school day? He was just the list that he just typed up in an email. So I think that there's probably some more, this was off the top of his head. So, you know, there are definitely some, you know, other schools that we can turn to to see if there's, you know, other tips that they have regarding this.
So the timing might be a little odd for, for this room. We haven't even done this year's ACT yet and we're talking about next year's SAT or the possibility of going to it. And it's because we want a very long runway with our current sophomores who will be the ones that will be the first SAT. So we want to have communication opportunities out there through newsletters or maybe an apparent information night or a Zoom call, make people come on and understand why we're proposing a change. And we feel that, you know, a year is appropriate, quite honestly.
Can I ask a quick question? The SAT is adaptive, is that correct? The ACT is not going, it's not, it's not going to be, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah. And with the adaptive, the first section of the reading and writing is the same for all students. It has a mixture of easy, medium and hard questions. And then the second section that's dispatched is dependent on how they did on that first section. So that's part of how they reduce the time a little bit. Is if you tended towards, you know, doing well on some of these hard questions, then we're not gonna give you all the easy questions that, you know, you need to do because we are pretty sure you could do those. So now we're going to give you that second section that has more of the medium to hard questions. Students who are kind of in the middle, you, you actually could get a higher score on the easier one that would be dispatched than the harder one, if you're kind of right in the middle, the way that the scoring works. It's not adaptive like the math tests are adaptive. The math tests are adaptive, like every couple of questions, those adapt. And so this is just the two sections, so the second section is adaptive for these.
Does this change the way that we currently teach our kids? Like, does it change any of, like, the way we teach them because they're, now we're standardizing, or the SAT is more of a standard test than the ACT?
Not at all, because we've, our teachers have always looked at ACT, they've always looked at the, back when we had the practice ACT, they looked at those results and tried to help our students to the best of their ability. And again, especially in our, our math and English content areas. So we feel that through the resources available and the alignment with the PSAT, it'll be, become a more seamless system, to be honest. We can take those results, share them with the staff, they will be able to work on weaknesses and improving those strengths much more easily. And that's why we started with our teachers. We said, is this, you know, is this gonna impact you? And the English Department, Department, Science Department, they all said, we take it to go. Like, they, they can adjust and they can certainly support the change.
So I don't want to date my husband, but. I won't, but people could figure it out. But, so my initial concern was the science piece, because I know when he took, I'm from Pennsylvania and in Pennsylvania we all do the SAT. I had never even heard of the ACT when I came to college in Ohio. So he, you know, he took the SAT and when he was trying to apply at Case Western, they were like, well, we don't have enough information. So he had to go ahead and like pay for another test and go take another test that they deemed appropriate to give them the piece to, for that STEM. So I'm assuming, since he graduated a couple of years. So I'm assuming, since he graduated a couple of years ago, they have changed it in that amount of time. So as you're saying, their sciences are, because I, you know, you wouldn't want to see the STEM kids be disadvantaged in any way.
Correct.
But you're saying that there's science incorporated into those math pieces.
Yeah. And when I would do the ACT prep with students, I would tell them, when we would get to the ACT science section, I would say, okay, well, this is the reading section, but it's science-style. So you don't actually have to have any science-specific knowledge to do well on that ACT science section. It's all experimental design, reading graphs and charts, interpreting things. So it, it is, you know, that STEM focus with that. But it, that's covered on the questions that you'd see on the, on the SAT as well. They have completely, SAT has completely dropped all the subject tests that they used to have. So sometimes schools, and that's probably what they had him do, is go and do, like, the subject test. But with the SAT's redesign, all of that science is embedded more within those two sections now.
And, and we can certainly continue to provide information to our families for those that would like to take both. We just want to say that at Revere High School, the spring or junior year, you're going to have access to the online SAT. That's our, that's our desire.com for today.
Right, that's a good point today.
Yeah. But we can, I, we can certainly communicate that. We can push it on our social media. I know CBCC does an ACT prep that we, we promote in our partnership. So all that access is still there. We're just, we're saying that we, we prefer at least even better return on our, the way our system is set up with our PSAT and everything, we just feel.
Well, you guys are definitely the experts, so you know what you're looking for. But it might be worth while just for parents who may be the same age as my husband. Who, who, you know, are going to say, like, wait, that's, there, there won't be enough information on that test for them.
Absolutely, yeah.
This is why we're making the switch, and don't worry if you're of a certain age.
That's why we want to get through March eleventh, our, our ACT for our juniors, and then honestly, turn around, probably my first parent letter would be, you know, in April. Just, hey, just so you know, we're, we are switching to SAT in March of, and that would be for our juniors, sophomores, freshmen, and incoming eighth graders. So hopefully, in a few years, it's just, this is what we do. We're a PSAT/SAT school, and our students, they're creating College Board accounts. Probably that first freshman class meeting where we pull them in, and then they're using those College Board accounts for their, and it'll be right, everything will be right there for the parents and the students. It'll be.
Well, and the resources for the SAT will.
Unbelievable.
Really good.
All right. Are there any questions?
Anybody who wants to talk more about ACT?
You're all for it, right?
Elizabeth, thank you for really well, though. Thorough, thank you. Presentation, thank you.
So we don't have any board agenda items? Mr. Burdine?
Nothing for the board's agenda for tonight, thank you.
Mr. White, you're up.
I'm not going to be as excited with those five presentations, so.
Yeah, we just had so many.
All right.
It was good.
So moving on to my agenda for tonight, we have there the list of the, basically, the curriculum that we were, shared with the presentations tonight. So we have the proposed new middle school financial literacy class, and then the, right after that, the high school honors music ensemble. And once again, I will, I have Brenda put this on for the regular agenda next week, so that way, the students can, they don't have questions in the comments. They'll have the opportunity to put it to the public in comments at that meeting.
Mr. White, just a quick question for, for, so the first reading is next week, or is this the first, is that Steve's question?
We're going, I'm just going to double it up. I'm going to have first reading now, first reading then.
Sorry.
Sorry.
No, I actually asked today. I was like, but they can't comment if they have a comment. So I was, I have concern about it.
Okay, good.
They could comment. I, I don't know of any time that a person who's wanted to talk hasn't been.
Yeah, officially, though, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay. That takes us through, uh, to the information discussion items there, and then review of our draft agenda for next week. Any questions on those?
No.
You have to watch your draft agenda for next week. This is very thick, mainly because we have, like, our handbooks, student handbooks. We'll call, you see the student recognitions and presentations listed there for us. And you'll see a nor, a bigger-than-normal number in some of those groups, because remember, in January, we had a snow day, and so not all those students came that night to present. So we'll have more than normal that night. Then public, I have the opportunity to speak to agenda items. And then Mr. Burdine's part.
Treasure items are fairly routine minutes. Financial report, which through January, were about fifty-three thousand dollars. That is it positively, so we're making good guesses so far. It's a good thing, right? Tax money has started to flow in this month, so we'll see that going forward. It has been slow thus far. The only, we have the tax rate resolution, that's an annual item that you see, to approve the rates, which are already approved by our voters. So you do see that pretty much every February. And then we have asset deletions, our curriculum materials no longer utilized in the district for Marsha, and then an outdated list of technology items from John that are on there. We will work with a group of resellers that we use to try to repurpose those after your approval. Then our purchase donations, there's one, we had an anonymous donation for a shelving unit at Richfield Elementary School for a lost and found area. The donor wishes to remain anonymous, and that's it.
We don't have any Board of Education agenda items at this time. And then, Kuyahoga Valley Career Center, this is Burke.
I'll have a brief update.
Very good. And the next is my agenda. So we have, as a placeholder, any resignations for retirement purposes. And then also, after that, then we have the salary increase. Caitlin there. And then athletic supplemental contracts, the spring season's coming up for baseball boys to, boys track and girls track.
Yes, good, girls track, thank you.
And then the supplemental contracts at Dean. Equal Holloway there. And then Dean, we have the classified personnel, bus driver and transportation. We have a change of positions for Catherine Rundell, who will be switching for us to, from an aide to secretary. Continuing to fill in those roles. And then we have some new hires for intensive needs educational aide, Kristy Broadwater. She's not new to the district, but new position. And bus driver in training to motorcycle. And then substitutes, classified Kathleen Harris. And then we have the athletic supplemental contracts listed there for us. And student auditorium workers, Abby and Max. Any questions on any of those? And student services, home instruction. Home instructor, instructor there. And then number four, other business CCP with Akron, University of Akron. And we have been out of state trip for our high school music program to Orlando for January twenty-twenty-six. And we have the annual Ohio High School Flight Association membership. Start State College Credit Plus MOU. And then our student handbooks will be our first read. Kent State University, our CCP MOU, Kent State. And then same with the Kuyahoga Community College Credit Plus. Any questions on three or four? And we have our informational items there, listed in the next section.
Thank you, Mr. White. We do have the need to go into executive session this evening to discuss income of a public employee and then preparing for and conducting union negotiations. Do you want to have a motion in a second, please?
Motion, second.
Mrs. Stein.
Yes.
Mrs. Brackett.
Yes.
Mr. Hyde.
Yes.
Mr. Ballack.
Yes.
Mrs. Rainey.
Yes.